I'm going to call the Select Board meeting to order for Tuesday, May 28, 2024, and advise that we are going into executive session and we will return to our regular meeting not before 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board enter into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with all non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Police Chief, as well as pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, Section 21a3 to discuss strategy. With respect to litigation, as the Chair has declared that an open session may have a detrimental effect on litigating, on the litigating position of the town. In addition to the general discussion of litigation matters, the following cases may be discussed, and they are as presented and noted in the packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
And I'm an I, 5-0, so we're going to executive. Good evening. I'm going to call the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, May 28, 2024, back to order. We were in executive session earlier this evening, and we did not take any action on item A, and we received an update on item B from council. I will also note that, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will, there will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Anybody for public comments and announcements?
Good evening. David Blank, Fire Chief, Deputy Constable is with me. So earlier today, we had a citizen bring a grocery bag full of unexploded ordinance into the police station. So we called the state police bomb squad. They came down. There was an emergency message that was put out earlier. We went detonating it. It's not unusual. We've done it a bunch of times before. It works pretty well. I think the, kind of the moral of the story or the lesson that we want to get out here is if you find stuff like that, don't bring it to the police station. Don't transport it anywhere. Leave it in place. Call us. We'll come to you. State police will come to you, and then they can take it and move it. A lot of times, these, these things are unstable because they're old, and they've been, you know, in not good conditions, you know, damp basements or whatever. So fortunately, this time, everything worked out fine. We loud banged on Queen Anne Road, and it was all over. But other than that, just, I guess, a footnote to that, it's been an exceptionally crazy weekend. We've been busy. I went from there to a dive rescue in Brewster to a building fire in Dennis, back to here. So if this isn't indicative of what the summer's going to look like, we're in for a busy, busy summer, so.
It was really busy this weekend.
Yeah, it was crazy busy. So a lot of people here, so. But that's it. Everything worked out fine, and nobody was hurt, and...
Thank goodness for that.
Yeah.
And thank you for that update.
Sure, no problem. Just figured, with the emergency message, figured we'd let everybody know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Public comment and announcement? Cindy? No?
No.
Okay.
(laughter)
Can I get a, oh, did you have a public comment, announcement?
Uh, no.
Okay, sorry.
Not at this time.
Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from May 20, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. New business?
I move that we approve the committee recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee. Frank Wyacek Jr., Golf Committee Full Member, term to be determined. Eric Clark, Golf Committee Full Member, term to be determined. John Adams, Golf Committee Full Member, term to be determined. Gene Bulger, Treasure Chest Committee Full Member, term to expire 6/30/2026. Deborah Gibson, Treasure Chest Committee Alternate Member, term to expire 6/30/2027. Frederick Rice, Bike Ways Committee Full Member, term to expire 6/30/2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
This is going to take a few minutes here. Before we go any further, Madam Chair, I have a question for the Town Administrator through you.
Mm-hmm.
This is not only the first time in 24 years that I've seen a TA make a committee appointments on the basis and on behalf of the interview committee, but as half of that interview committee and as the only board member who interviewed all three of the prospective Golf Committee candidates, I want to ask you, who asked you to prepare this recommendation on essentially my behalf?
I did.
Okay, so going on. Were you aware that I texted the Chair of the Board on April 12th informing her I disagreed with bringing this forward tonight? To get to my central point, Madam Chair, if I could...
Yeah, Joe.
I appreciate the board member, but I know that there was a question that related to me, so I want to be clear. The memorandum, staff was directed to write it. I'm not aware by whom. I then told staff that it's not appropriate for them, not that it's not appropriate for them, but it's more appropriate for me to present. So a staff member wrote this for me, on whose direction I don't know. I understood that it was for the Board's consideration. So I'm presenting it on behalf of staff. I defer to the member and his answer. I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you, Joe.
I still have the floor, Madam Chair.
Just answer a question. No, I was not aware of a text message.
Okay. To get to my central point, I objected to these recommendations based on where we started and where we're heading. I'm not an expert on golf like Jeff, who chairs a board on a well-known Cape private golf club, but I do know a thing or two about government committees. This board went after the remaining Golf Committee members and basically eviscerated everything by not allowing them to meet in, well, nowhere in the charters that grant us that authority, and changing their committee charge to essentially have them wait for the Board's approval to meet what subjects we discussed. But even that doesn't, didn't disturb me as much as what approving these appointments would do to the demographics of the committee. When I first got married, incredibly enough, my wife couldn't get credit without help. A woman was basically frozen out of a household finance decision basis just because she was a woman. I've carried that thought with me throughout my entire adult life, and I'm proud at seeking out and appointing women to many committee positions through the years. This committee had three women out of seven before the Board blew it up. For as long as I can remember, that has never been the case. It has always been sort of a boys' club. What we're faced with is reverting back to that same boys' club. And make no mistake about it, that will likely last long after most of us sitting here tonight have departed this Board, as it is a coveted committee slot with very minimal turnover. As this is a municipal golf course and not a private club, we have an obligation to have a committee reflect the townspeople it serves. Over 55, excuse me, I still have the floor.
Just getting recognized, so excuse me.
Okay, so you can finish.
You're excused.
Okay.
So are you.
All right, like point of order here, so...
Okay, over 55% of the town is female. Try to rationalize the proposed action to the majority of the townspeople who are true stakeholders of the operation and paid for the golf course construction, not merely the golfing public. But again, in closing, you can't even act on this proposal tonight because it was posted wrong at a minimum, or perhaps was the result of a violation of the open meeting law if the other parties discussed this in private, because I was never part of this. I emphatically did not vote for it on a two-member committee, which had two separate posted meetings, one with Jeff and me and one with Michael and me, making this a non-vote to recommend the appointment. And I know for a fact that the people sitting to my right knew that this was true, but forged ahead anyway. Michael knew because I told him in a posted meeting how I felt. Jeff knew because I told him in a posted meeting how I felt, and Julie knew because I have the text right here to show it. According to the public record, Michael and Jeff never met in a posted meeting together to legally discuss this. Moreover, I have written confirmation that no one in the office received normal recommendation minutes for the proposed Golf Committee appointments. I know you're going to do what you want tonight, as you often do, but that won't make it right.
Thank you, Don. And Michael, go ahead, and then I have a comment.
I won't get into, I'll look forward to the debate, put it that way. I won't get into that. Don, I would ask you, being a long-term member of the Select Board, what happens when, when the interview committee doesn't agree with appointments? Where do they go from there?
It goes out of the agenda as a non-recommendation. It was not recommended by the interview committee because you and I are the interview committee, Jeff sat in for you, and two recommendations, one for one person and one for two persons, were done through different persons, except that I was part of all of them. I did not agree, and a 1-1 vote makes it a non-vote.
Just, just to follow up. You know, similar to Pete's point a few weeks ago about vote to approve and that language on the agenda. Don, as long as I've been here, when the interview committee doesn't agree, it goes on the agenda for, for a full debate. You've already had your debate, clearly with whomever you had your debate with. Your accusation about open meeting law violation is just more the same with you. You're blowhard, you're a political hack, and I'm not taking it.
That from the non-bully?
As far as I'm concerned, I have the floor. As far as I'm concerned, this debate belongs in this room. You just graciously said your opinion. I've got a lot of opinions about the bias that you just put out there, and, and many, many, many times in the past, of what we should put on committees because of their gender. I can't wait to have this debate with you tonight, and, and I'll leave it at that. This is where it belongs. This is not a recommendation of the interview committee, though the interview committee did interview every single one of these persons, and they went into a file, and we've had a previous conversation about when they come out of that file, and that was after last week's appointments were made. So you can sit here and grandstand all you want, Don, you're factually wrong across the board, and now we can debate your gender bias.
Yeah, that from the non-bully.
All right, hold on. Just for the record, I just want to be clear. The text that was sent to me, which was sent on April 12th, which I did not respond to, but you made it perfectly clear, you said, "I want to make it clear that Jeff will be making recommendations concerning appointments to the Golf Committee..."
That was for the first two.
"...without," just, just to be clear, this is the text I got, "without," in caps, "my agreement, and it should appear as such on the agenda. I anticipate a much larger public discussion of the golf mess, should that happen." So that was the text. There was no response from me. I acknowledge receipt of the text. And again, to that point, anytime interview committee members don't agree on who should be appointed, to Michael's point, it comes to this Board. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It says on the agenda, and I quote, "approve the committee recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee." It does not say "to discuss appointments." It was as if we had made a positive recommendation, Michael, and that did not happen. You didn't even talk to me about this. You went off and did it on your own, so you're going to live with that action on your own. I had nothing to do with that.
Just to avoid back and forth, I do live with it, Don, because this is where the debate happens, and again, this is where you pick and choose what you want the agenda to say. This is where you pick and choose how it goes. We don't have to take a positive action on this tonight if the five of us, if the majority of the five of us don't agree. So again, Don, this is you doing your blowhard routine that you did the last five times we've talked about golf because you don't agree, and you were the center of the problem at the golf course with the last committee, whether you like it or not, and you, my friend, have to live with that.
So, hold on one second. I just want to point out, for this discussion, and I think Pete brought up about the word "approval" before, and to that point, we had that conversation exactly, which is, we don't have to approve. We can take no action, we can take a negative action. So the language is the language. So to your point, you've read your statement. If you have a follow-up, that's fine, but my other question for the interview committee is, are there any females that were interested in a position? Because the Golf Committee has not met, and we've been waiting for this point. So further detriment to the Golf Committee is what's going on here if people aren't appointed so that they can meet. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wouldn't mind getting them up and running with a quorum, Michael, but as you often do, you're twisting the truth. This, you would chair when you knew that there was a problem on that committee that I inherited on that committee, and that had nothing to do with the current construct of them. It had everything to do with prior members. A couple referred to the interview committee at that point in time. I had nothing to do with that. I was liaison for them for a year, and I tried to bring them out of that problem, not induce them into it. So I'm tired of you bullying me, so shut up.
All right, let's have some decorum here, and at this point...
Madam Chair, just to answer your question.
Yeah.
I refuse to respond to him anymore. Just to answer your question, no, we had no female applicants.
Okay, thank you. So the applicants that we have in front of us are the, are the people that were interviewed as people interested in golf?
I still say that this is based on a recommendation that was not made. It says it right here.
Right, and, and the discussion will lead to whatever action this Board is going to take, whether to approve or to take no action. So the, we can't get caught up on the word "approve" because "approve" doesn't mean anything if we chose not to approve it.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Would it, I'm going to ask, would it be appropriate for me to withdraw my motion? I don't, was there a second?
Yes, there was a second.
So, so hear me out. Withdraw the second, withdraw my motion. I will make another motion, because if I'm hearing Don correctly, it's specific to the three Golf Committee members, but we have a Treasure Chest, a Treasure Chest, and a Bike Ways in play. If we withdraw the second, I withdraw my motion, I would be happy to make another motion to approve if all are, I guess I would make another motion to approve the Treasure Chest, the Treasure Chest, and the Bike Ways Committee. We can then get that done.
Yeah, please.
And then come back to, I think what needs to be discussed, as, as Michael said, in open forum, and, because I also have some questions as well. So if you would like to remove your second, Select Board Member McCaskill, and I can split them up. If you don't, I, then I don't know where we would go from there.
Prior to removing my second, I would only, I would only ask what the proper form is. So if we're deadlocked, we just, do we just, and this is through you, to Select Board Member Howell, if we're deadlocked, as we are, because of gender, do we just leave those in a file and they don't go on the agenda? Because to Don's point, we can't recommend if we don't agree.
I didn't say that.
We have a two, okay, reword it, say it, say it how you meant. How does this appropriately, through you, how does this appropriately get on the agenda? I believe it is, so I'm not removing my second.
Okay.
But how does it get on the agenda if we don't agree?
To discuss the appointment, of, it wasn't based on a recommendation, it never was based on a recommendation.
So let me, let me, for clarification, ask you. If this agenda were to say, "Discussion of Committee Recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee..."
Nope.
"...Discussion of," without recommendation, "Discussion of Select Board Interview Committee Applicants."
Applicants, perhaps, but it wasn't a recommendation. It was a deadlock. It was a 1-1 vote.
So again, just for clarification, if we were to say, rewording this new, this item under "new business," which would come back as "old business," that...
What you need to say is a discussion about appointments to the Golf Committee.
That's what I'm saying. So that's going to satisfy you for next week if we were to do that, and then to, then go back and, well, Michael doesn't want to change his recommend, his motion.
I'm just outraged that my name was actually associated with a recommendation that I didn't make.
Go ahead, Joe, sorry.
To the earlier question, so you have a main motion, you have a second. Acceptable subsidiary motions could include a motion to divide the question, somebody could make a further amendment to take items, say, for example, four, five, and six. Right now, you have a viable...
Right.
...in terms of parliamentary procedure, a motion before you. There's any number of subsidiary motions, so it's not necessary to withdraw and start again.
So you could...
Well, I understand that, and thank you, Joe, that's helpful. I'm, I, I'm fearful because I just want to make sure that, and, and please, board members, bear with me a little here, first time for me doing this, but Gene Bulger, Deborah Gibson, and Frederick Rice, were those agreed upon by the interview committee?
And the proper form was put in, and it was signed by both Michael and I, which I normally do, and send a copy to the other person on the interview committee so that if I made an error of some sort, they can opine on it, but yes, that's the process.
So follow up to that, can I just ask a question on...
Of course.
...in terms of, because...
You don't have to ask me.
No, I'm asking you in terms of...
Oh, okay, sorry.
...in terms of golf.
Yes.
And this is just a thought I'm having. If you appointed two members to the Golf Committee, would they have a quorum?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I have reached out to the Golf Committee Chair several weeks ago, and I have not heard back.
Oh.
There has been no reply to my email of, to Chair Martha Duffy, where I, I asked if she would still be coming back as the Chair, and if not the Chair, then part of the committee, so...
So you don't know?
Can I talk to you after the meeting about that?
Well, of course you can.
So...
I'd rather have you talk to me about it now.
It's, it's, it's private.
Okay.
I don't want to broadcast.
Okay, so there'll be a follow-up conversation about that status.
Yeah, of course you can talk to me.
So, go ahead.
Madam Chair, if you would like me to remove my second, I would be happy to.
Well, I was just wondering if that was going to achieve anything in terms of...
We're just singling out golf at this point, because this is not how we always...
No, I know, I agree. It's not, it's messy.
Select Board Member, this is a pet thing of his, so...
Yeah.
I will remove my second, Jeff, so I understand your intent. Somebody else can make a second motion if they want to. So I'll remove my second.
Okay, so...
So I'll remove my motion, and I will make a motion to approve the committee recommendations from the Select Board Interview Committee of Gene Bulger, Treasure Chest Committee Full Member, term to expire 6/30/26; Deborah Gibson, Treasure Chest Committee Alternate Member, term to expire 6/30/2027; and Frederick Rice, Bike Ways Committee Full Member, term to expire 6/30/25.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Thank you.
Now, back to the other three. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do take a little offense. I mean, words matter. Things that you say matter, things that I say matter. I do take a little offense to part of Select Board Members Howell, Select Board Member Howell's narrative of the Select Board blowing up the Golf Committee. To me, to me, Don, that sounds like they had nothing to do with the outcome, and that is, in fact, not accurate. Now, you may disagree with me about how the whole process went forward and what ended up happening with the Golf Committee, but to say publicly that the Golf Committee was blown up by the Select Board, in my opinion, is wildly inappropriate of you to do. My next question would be, because I, I believe I sat in with Eric and John with you, if that's, if I remember right, and Frank Wyacek probably was with you and Michael. My feeling is that the Golf Committee needs to begin to meet, and I would ask you, do you feel that the three candidates are viable candidates to sit on the Golf Committee?
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In response to that, despite the fact that Michael thinks that I've, that it's a cultural thing, I'm just telling you, and I explain this to you, I just don't want to play musical chairs where the music ends and there's one seat left. We actually have made an action by what we did, by deleting the possibility of another woman being on there. I am perfectly fine with getting to a quorum so that you can actually start doing something, but to squeeze it out so that there's nothing left to appoint to, I'm not fine with, and I've been consistent with everybody about that.
So I have, I have a couple thoughts. If, you have information that I don't have clearly regarding Martha. So if Martha, I'm, I'm going to assume by her non-response is probably not intending, I'm just thinking out loud here, is probably not intending on continuing, that would bring...
I didn't, I didn't say that. That's why we have to talk.
Well, okay, regardless, there would still be at least one open spot, if not two open spots, if we appoint these three. But my question to you was, do you feel that these three people are viable candidates to sit on our Golf Committee? That's yes or no?
Yes, but not all equally.
Understood. My next question would be, I went and looked at all of our other committees and boards. They are largely weighted more women than men. Some committees have seven women, six women, one male. I don't see male, female. I, I don't see any of that. I see people in this town who are willing to get out of their chairs at their home at 6 o'clock at night and come serve our town. I don't, I don't view it as men or women, because if, if that were the case, it's a slippery slope, because we'd have to be looking at all the other committees and saying, "Well, this one has six men and one woman, and this one has six women and one man." I don't think we can even begin to think about, I guess it would be equality of outcome of, of our committee members. I think what we need is real good people who are willing to do a real good thing for a real good town, and I think you're sending a really bad message, especially to one of these three. And I'm saying this as respectfully as I, I, I'm not interested in an argument, but one of these three are not going to get appointed, and they're going to be sitting at home saying, "I didn't get appointed because I don't check a box." I think that's a bad message. I think that's not going to make more people want to sign up to, to, to be put on the chopping block of, "Do I check this box for this committee?" Because if I don't, I'm not going to get appointed. Now, to your, to your, I believe your 30,000-foot point, which is, "I didn't approve this for a vote tonight." I think that's what I'm hearing, and I can respect that. However...
Recommend would probably be better.
Okay, recommend. However, you just stated that you're okay with appointing two of them so the quorum is made and they can meet. In my opinion, that's a contradictory, you're taking two stances here.
No, I'm not.
Okay, so then explain to me which way you would prefer to go with this.
I don't want to take any action tonight at all.
You don't want to take any action?
No, until we can actually meet again and to make a formal recommendation.
But I thought you just said you'd be okay recommending two.
Unless you, no, not tonight, but unless you want to agenda it differently, because it says that we, Michael and I, recommended these appointments. That is not what happened. There is, it was not a, to, to nothing vote to recommend. This is a outright opening. It's without a recommendation, where you're looking for a motion from the whole Board to make an appointment, but this makes it look like it's coming from the committee, and it's not coming from the committee. I mean, Jeff, you've met with me on these things before. I mean, we either agree, we don't agree.
We agree on the people, though, Don.
Yeah.
We don't agree on the premise, on, on, on your, on your, I don't even know what to call it.
I just want to, I'm just going to interrupt for a moment and just say that at this point, these are the applicants that you have and that have been interviewed. There are no other applicants. I understand that you're not happy with the way it was posted. I think it's perfectly, perfectly clear to everybody in this room and online, and the minutes will reflect, that you feel that the way it was posted was a problem, but ultimately, it is a debate happening here, and it's clear that you're not happy with the way the process has worked. But that is the process. When you guys can't agree with how it's supposed to come, it comes to us, and then we talk about it. So you don't have any other applicants to meet the, and what you just read, if I'm listening correctly to what you read, and I respect it, it's not that I don't. At the same token, to Jeff's earlier point, we can't make up people out of the air applying to serve on boards, and the fact that somebody wants to take the time out of their day to volunteer, we should respect it, whoever they are.
Several things. To your point about male, female, other boards, there was a difference in the way the Golf Course plays for men and women. Would you agree to that?
No, I, I don't agree to that.
So the tee boxes can all be the same, and everything's just...
That is not for us or the committee to debate. That is for the people who run the golf course to decide. That is not what they should be doing. And yes, you're right, I'm on a board of a different golf course, and it's the same thing there. We let the professionals run the golf course. We do it daily. It's not for the committee to decide that the tees are in the wrong place. That's not what they're supposed to do. As a matter of fact, you told me that when I took over as liaison. You told me that. Once again, you're contradicting yourself to me, not to them. This is firsthand knowledge on my part. You said this.
I did not say it in that context. I said that they were trying to make it play differently, and that it's something that we need to discuss, and it should have been an item to discuss.
It isn't something we should discuss. This is for the director of golf.
So it just runs on its own?
No, Don, the director of golf runs it.
And...
Just because, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go ahead.
Just because three members of a golf committee, regardless of what committee, what golf course, what universe, if three members of a golf committee determine that the tees should be moved up or moved back, that does not mean that the tees get moved up or moved back.
No, it did recommend it, though.
Gets brought to the director of golf for review, which our director of golf, who by all intents and purposes does a remarkable job with a golf course that's spent, sees 44,000 rounds a year. I don't see it your way. I, the problem I'm having with your argument, and I understand your argument, and I'm not saying you're wrong, and by all accounts, by, as far as I can tell, your argument's laudable. I just feel that we're gonna create a whole nother problem that's gonna be infinitely worse than the problem that you're trying to correct here at this table tonight. And that's by not allowing these three people to sit, because I think you said that you're, you feel that they're quality people who should be sitting. We're gonna tell one of them they can't sit because they're a male. That doesn't sound good to the rest of the public. I think we're gonna create more problems trying to solve this one. And I do, I agree with you. If, and if, I'm sorry, Madam, if procedurally, this doesn't read the way you want it to read, that's a whole nother discussion. But at the end of the day, we have three really good people who want to sit on this board, and there's gonna probably be one or two openings that a woman or a man can apply.
Don?
Just to be clear, I didn't say quality. I said qualified. And the reason I'm saying that this way is, we oft, for everybody on this board, let's be clear, when we do the interviews, it is not always first person in, first person appointed. If we have an objective we're trying to accomplish, it could well be that it takes a month or two to get to that point where we find the right mix of people to be on a committee that we're trying to repopulate. It's not the first person that shows up, always. And it just has never been the first person. So, my concern is, in a rush to do this, I have no problem with creating a quorum, but in a rush to do this, there are other considerations that I would like to be in play that are completely eliminated once you do this.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
The way the interview, and I did two of them with you, with all due respect, that is, that seven minutes we spend with somebody is not gonna give you or me a real good understanding or a grasp of whether or not this person sitting in front of us is gonna play nice with other people on that committee. What I do know is, the two people that we interviewed is they both left. We both said they'd be fantastic. And as a matter of fact, you said to one of them, I'm not looking for a golfer. I'm looking for somebody who's interested in protecting the asset that this town has, which is Cranbury Valley. I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. I think both of those people that I interviewed with you would be fantastic people to steward that, to look after our asset. And I know Frank Wysech personally, I think he's a home run. So again, I go to the bottom of the funnel with you here, and I ask, they're qualified. I believe you agree. I think we're getting caught up on semantics here. There's gonna be one or two appointments or available seats. I...
All I want to end with is, I did not...
I don't, you know what, Madam Chair? I don't know if I want to make a motion, because I don't want this board to get into that cyclone of, you know, what Don said in the very beginning was, you're gonna do what you do anyway, because you just do it anyway. If it takes a week to let these two figure it out, God love the both of you, then I'll, then let's table it for, what's one more week? By the way, the golf course has been running just fine.
Mm-hmm. That's fine. We can wait another weekend.
So we can wait one more week, I think, I think, thank goodness. Pete's got something to say.
It's all right. What I'll say is, I didn't see this going this way tonight. So, I'm gonna be all over the place, because although I did have some questions, many of them were answered. I have a point that I want to bring forward. But in the midst of this conversation, I've tried to do a little bit of homework. And I will state that when I read the agenda, I did assume it was the recommendation of the interview committee, right, wrong, or different, but that's how I did read it. But again, I understand that we bring things to this board and have an opportunity to debate. So, to quickly touch on a couple things where I was doing my homework, when, be with me, because God knows, I don't know how to use these things that well. But I quickly jumped into one of our policies regarding committees, and it states, if after discussion, the interview committee is agreement, not in agreement by majority, then the full board can either interview, seek new candidates, or request additional candidates. So I guess seeking and requesting additional is the same. So, the way our policy is written is that we bring these three individuals in front of us if the two committee members aren't in agreement, and have an interview with them. Whether that's necessary or not is up to the board to decide. That wasn't my thought going into tonight. Let's see. And I will also state that although I wouldn't base the decision solely on gender, I understand the argument of a little bit of gender equity, especially since it is a course that is played by both male and female. My biggest point comes, and the point, the only point I was coming with tonight, has to do with the charge of this committee. And Madam Chair, you alluded to that these are the only three applicants for this committee as we sit here. And I'll be honest, I'm surprised we have three applicants, because I've had the pleasure over the past 14 months, and I say that tongue-in-cheek, of campaigning in this town. And without a doubt, the golf course, and not just the committee, but the golf course, was the number-one topic brought to my attention for various reasons, right? But the charge was often brought up to me. And this is the one I was prepared to discuss tonight. And it's the first paragraph within scope and procedure that talks about, when directed by the Select Board, the Golf Committee will then work to accomplish the directive by holding public meetings to discuss and gain public input, specific to the request of the Select Board. The agenda items will represent the Select Board's requests. That paragraph alone, and I understand there were some issues with the Golf Committee prior, but that paragraph alone would prevent me from ever applying to be a candidate for that committee. The fact that the way it's written today, I need to rely on this board to do anything, I'd rather sit home than go home than leave my house at 6:00 P.M. So, the point of me bringing this forward, whether it's factual or not, I'm not sure. Time would tell, is if that charge is modified, we may in fact find additional candidates to take interest in this committee. I'm not sitting here telling you any of the three candidates aren't worthy. I don't know any of them. My point is, we may have a greater pool of candidates without that written in the charge.
So that charge that you're reading is the newest charge?
Agreed. Oh, no, I understand. Jeff was kind enough, when he sent a charge for a different committee, and I asked for a redlined version from him, he was kind enough to send it to me and then included this, so I had the opportunity to read it. I'm telling you my opinion and what I've heard out there, as a candidate, that directive alone is setting people, is creating some disinterest in being part of that committee.
Understood, and there was a history there that, you know...
Sure, sure.
If I may speak to that. I think it was your first meeting when we had a discussion regarding appointments.
Mm-hmm.
And I made it very clear, from a historical standpoint, that the only charge that this town has put forward that is that restrictive is for the Golf Committee.
Sure.
And that as soon as the Golf Committee became functional again, I would be rewriting that charge to fall in line with all the other charges that the town has put forward.
And I don't disbelieve you, I don't...
No, and that wasn't why I was saying that. To your point, that we may have more people, we certainly may have more people.
Right.
So, I look forward, this is one of the reasons why I'm really excited to get this Golf Committee up and running again, is I can rewrite that prohibitive charge and make it what it should be.
Yeah. And if I can, Madam Chair, I'm glad to hear that. I just, I wonder if that's what is preventing people from showing an interest right now. So great that we're going to amend it, potentially amend it. I guess it's a collective decision of the board.
Of course.
But if that's what's prohibiting others from being interested, then that's alarming to me. Again, that was, that's what I was coming here tonight when I saw the three candidates, who I had just assumed were a recommendation from the committee, is that if it was the only three candidates, which you all answered, and that I think that charge may be preventing some folks from expressing an interest, so.
So...
What was the mic comments?
Just let me, there are, there is another very big reason why there have not been more people throwing their hat in the ring. And I'm not gonna get into why that is publicly, because I don't think it's the right choice to make right now. But I'd be happy to talk to you about that after, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Yeah, I just want to make one last point to Jeff. Whether you guys and I agree at all about how I feel about this, I do want to make the point is, it was no secret before tonight, either of you, that I did feel that way. I said that to you, I said that to Michael, I said it to Julie. It is not, it was not like I'm sandbagging you with something completely out of the blue tonight. I'm just saying what I'm saying. If you don't agree with me, that's fine, too. But it is not a surprise. It's not shocked.
I appreciate you saying that, because I don't feel sandbagged. We had this discussion once privately and then once publicly prior to tonight. So I don't feel that way at all, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, you know, again, for the record, you've read how you feel. We understand it. To me, this is a process, and it comes to the board for these exact discussions. So here we are. We have the ability to come back next week with different language on how this discussion will happen, and then we can have action taken at that point, or not. So, it sounds like you don't want to make another motion on that.
I think it's best that we move it to next week and let a discussion happen between the interview committee.
You want a post later in the week for us to meet?
Michael?
I'm just confused as to why we would do that. We've both agreed tonight that we don't agree on the candidates, right? So it really needs to come back. What are we gonna get accomplished by meeting again? That, so, the answer is, yes, I'm free all week, but what are we gonna accomplish? And I love having these conversations in an open meeting and not a conversation after it or somewhere else, because ultimately, we have a Golf Committee that's been inactive, that, I think part of the reason Pete heard it so many times during campaigning is that's when it blew up.
Right.
And it was a headline every single week. The action that was taken and the charge that was created was a charge that was voted, maybe not unanimously, but by majority of this board, based on what was going on at the time. So that's what we came up with. And we also had several conversations about having to wait until after the reappointment list went out, because we had someone that would not or refused to resign. So, the anticipation and all the events leading up till last week's reappointments and then tonight's discussion have happened. If the agenda language was wrong, because I did say, bring it forward, and everything that comes forward is from the interview committee, and it's not always Michael and Don said, in this case, it's Don and Jeff said twice, but the interview committee is a formal group and two appointed to it, but it's not always that group. People cover for each other. When we don't agree, what in your mind is the mechanism, because I'm gonna have to go back now and figure out the other meetings that this exact same thing's happened, minus the bad words between the two of us in public, it's been brought up this way before, and this is how we've done it. So if we're going to change that, but, and not firing a shot at you, firing a shot at a process, if we're gonna interview three people, and we like those three people, and I get the diversity in the committees, but I would challenge, when the last time it was that we interviewed somebody, unless we were, eh, they don't really fit in that spot, I would challenge the last time they didn't get brought forward. And I really don't want to be part of any conversation anymore where we're looking at somebody's gender, unless it's as a matter of policy to be on a committee. And functionality of the committee, you don't necessarily have to be a woman on the Golf Committee, though it's played by both. Several of our committees are both male and female. And I've never been in a place before where we have now had a public conversation for upwards of 35 minutes about appointing qualified people. But what I have been part of is nine years' worth of begging people to be on committees and reading vacancy lists. So whatever outcome we're looking for the Golf, I think this might be a much broader conversation, and I hate to even bring it back up after all the headlines we had last year. But if there's a problem now with the charge, and there's a problem now with, we're gonna pick and weight on people because they're a male or a female in an opposite circumstance, I've never heard this level of conversation on any other committee that we have in this town, where we're talking, any other committee, that we're talking about holding people back because of a gender. And quite frankly, I can't believe we're even having this conversation.
Understood.
I really can't believe we're having this conversation. So back to your ask. I would rely on you and Don to create the language, but I would keep it broad enough so that this board can vote to appoint or not appoint next week.
Yep.
Don and Michael don't agree, so we're putting it on the agenda as discussion and possible vote. That's fine with me. But we really owe it to these people. And what message are we sending to all the people that we have begged over the years to get on committees by not appointing people, when we as a board knew six months ago, I believe it's been six months, that this committee's been on pause?
Right.
Because of a problem that flowed into staff and flowed into a potential grievance and flowed into so many meetings and two years' worth of liaisons negotiating with members to stop this or stop that. This is an opportunity for us to get this committee up and running, and those that remained on it that have been active for six months to make a choice on whether they want to stay on it. But to Jeff's point, even if we put these three on, there's still room on the committee.
Right.
And we have no idea who's left on that committee after the committee starts up again.
Right.
But I appreciate, more than anything, Pete, how many times he heard it, not being on the board, because I can't tell you how many times I've heard it being on the board, on both sides.
Agreed. Right.
And this seems to me to be some sort of political football, but boy, we're making some awful statements. And if you want to talk about dysfunction, this defines it.
I'll let you go, Don.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All that's well and good, but I'd get back to the primary problem I have with this. It's not just that it's mis-agended, it's that my name was being used as if I was agreeing with it. But implicitly, it said it was a recommendation of the committee. I didn't make that, and you didn't even call me to say you were gonna make it. So, I really object to that, because as a committee, as a committee structure, there's two people on it. And if both of them don't agree, then it has to come here for action to either appoint or not appoint. But don't use my name to imply that I had agreed to it, because it's agended as if the interview committee recommended it as a committee, and that's not true.
Jeff?
If I may, Madam Chair. So, to Don's point, I hear you, I respect it. I'd probably feel the same way. But to your second point, it comes to this board to either appoint or not appoint. So, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the applicants presented. Frank Wysech Jr., Golf Committee, full member, term to be determined. Eric Clark, Golf Committee, full member, term to be determined. John Adams, Golf Committee, full member, term to be determined.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
And I appreciate your motion in trying to move this forward. I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna vote no to give Don his statement about the interview committee being listed as bringing it forward. So I would like the language to be different, but able to be able to take that action next week.
Yeah.
And the interview committee, Don, is not you. It's not me. It's us sometimes and other people other times. And you and I did speak about this, and I know you love to get in the last word, thinking that's the last thing people are gonna remember. You and I have discussed this. We agreed not to agree, and we agreed that the conversation comes to the full board. This is the first time you have done what you did tonight related to the Golf Course. This is the first time you have done what you did tonight, related to the golf course, and had your pre-made statement to attack myself and this board. First time done. As many years as we've served, first time. This has never been done before, and you and I did not agree from the beginning, and yes, in the beginning, you told me you thought there should be a balance of women and men on that board. I'm looking at it very differently than you are, clearly. So I will vote no on the motion, and ask if it fails, that we bring it back next week with language that Don would want to be that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If I could, I'm inclined to vote no as well. I would like a couple different pieces for next week, in addition, assuming if this does get defeated tonight. Could we include the applications from each of the applicants in the packet? I don't believe we need to bring them in here for an actual interview, but the policy states we would interview them, but I think their application is probably sufficient, as it's the only three current candidates. Additionally, and I don't know if it's realistic or not, Jeff, but could we also include in next week's agenda the revised charge?
Absolutely. I will have that done.
In my opinion, I'm not trying to do you work, it looks like it's literally that one paragraph that needs to go.
Absolutely.
You'll call, and I've since lost my third thought, so.
It happens a lot.
Welcome to the Select Board.
Serve your time, yeah. I wish it was only because of this board.
So.
Oh, I just got it, thank you, sorry. I noticed, I noticed in the letter, or in the recommendation, it does not have the terms yet, we do have the terms outlined in the agenda, can we associate a term with each of them in the recommendation next week? Please, thank you.
And, just to have this conversation here now, in terms of wording, rather than making sure, circulating yet another email, if the agenda item is posed as discussion on appointments to the golf committee?
Potential appointments, yeah.
I would.
With possible vote.
Yeah. I would prefer to have the second removed, and my motion removed, so that there's not a negative vote to these people.
I'll remove my, remove my second.
Thank you, and I remove my motion.
Okay, so we've got the language for the agenda for next week, and we'll get the applications included, and the revised charge, and along with that, we'll have the terms.
Hopefully, we still have these three people by next week.
Right. Okay, so, sorry.
Madam Chair, if I may, and thank you for allowing the interruption, I purposely waited for the board to go through all of your potential actions under the item, but before you go any further, I think it's appropriate for me to point out a couple things that I think you may have an opportunity to correct on the record. What I heard tonight, although uncomfortable, and I'm sure it was uncomfortable to some degree for everybody participating, as well as many of us listening and hearing it, I think there is very much a need for it, and I think, as many of you said, it was the proper venue. But the beginning of this discussion started out with allegations and aspersions, and by my count, at least three and upwards of six employees. Now, I'm going to put out right there that one of them is me, I'm not worried about that, but comments made about allegations of open meeting law and the like, I think it needs to be put out there that you do not believe that that is staff.
Nope, no.
Because the inference was there enough for me to be worried about my direct reports, fearing that they've done something wrong, and what they've merely done in every instance was follow direction of board members, and we operate through the chair. So any imprecise language or anything like that does not revolve around staff.
Correct.
I think it would be helpful if that was affirmed by the board.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to that point, that's why I started out asking, who asked you to do that? Is absolutely not even the slightest thought in my mind that somehow or another staff had engaged in anything, somebody had to have told you that that was a recommendation. That's what I was getting at.
So Madam Chair, if I could, my comments were meant to be relative to allegations of open meeting law violation.
Which would have been us.
Presumably, relative to language. So I think you all know, but perhaps the general audience would benefit to know, that every normally Tuesday morning, my team and I meet with the chair, typically, and debrief on what happened the night before. And then later that same day in the afternoon, sorry, I apologize, I meet with my team to debrief from my notes, and then later that afternoon, we meet with the chair to prep for the next agenda, which is about 48 hours away from being posted. As you know, but the public may not, that's why we share the language with the board as soon as the chair has approved it, and in the outside chance that a board member says, wait a second, something's incorrect. We have also availed ourselves of the right, under the open meeting law, to correct language within the 48 hours, as is allowed under the open meeting law through division of government. My point is, the agenda, the packet, you have all of that days before your meeting, and so I just want to put out there on behalf of staff, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, so that I can address these alleged concerns, or concerns and alleged allegations, with them, to assure them that whatever the board has gone through, and whatever the comments made, it is not something that should rest on my staff, because I will assure you, I have every expectation when I do my debrief in the morning, that there are going to be great concerns by staff, given how the discussion went earlier tonight.
Thank you, Joe, and I would say that I learned today that you had called on Friday and had a problem, and I had no knowledge of that, and you were going to reach out.
It would have been too late by then.
But, but you didn't, I'm just, just for the record, I'm just making it clear, that I heard nothing about any problem with this, so I'm just making that notation. Don?
The reason I called is I wanted a copy of what the recommendation was, because I was unaware that there had been a recommendation from the committee, and I think that's a perfectly appropriate inquiry.
I'm not saying it's not, I'm just saying that, that the comment was made that you were going to call me, apparently, and I didn't hear from you.
Okay.
And ultimately, the way that we know that this comes, when the interview committee does not agree, is that it comes to the board. So we'll come back with revised language that you're more comfortable with on the agenda for.
I still want to address what he, what he said. In no way, when I made the call, I made it clear to the person I spoke to, in no way is staff involved with this in any way at all, other than they came on, got put on the agenda. Your name was on the memo, which is why I started with you, I had no idea where this recommendation came from, because I would have been part of that committee, and I didn't, I didn't sign on for it. So, at no point did I make any allegation that anything improper happened with any staff member at all, but it does rest here.
Okay, so let's move on from that item, because we have other items here to address. Currently, we are on B, review the five-year.
Chair?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do you mind if I take C out of order?
No, yes, no, good idea, right.
Thank you. I move that we approve of conservation restrictions for Zero Pleasant Lake Avenue and Zero Woodland Avenue as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five-zero.
You've been sprung.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want.
I'm turning it around for signature.
Sure, nobody's here.
No one's here.
Thank you, Julie.
No problem.
Okay.
Review the.
I mean, we could, just in case someone's online.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
I move that we approve a 2024 Junk Dealer License Renewal for Windsong Antiques Incorporated 346 Route 28. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
I move that we approve.
I apologize, could I just ask?
Oh, sorry.
Motion and second on that one?
He was the motion, I was the second.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the following special permit applications for the Harwich Chamber of Commerce, One Schoolhouse Road. Number one, event application, one-day entertainment and one-day wines and malt special permit for June 8, 2023, no, what?
2020.
2024, in the packet, it reflects 2023, at least in my packet. 2020, at least I caught it, 2023, 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, second annual barbecue competition outside at the community center at 100 Oak Street, entertainment, amplification, and dancing. As well as, event application, Port Summer Nights, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM Wednesdays, all Wednesdays, from July 3, 2024, through August 28, 2024, entertainment and amplification. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just Madam Chair, I apologize, that's a scrivener's error on item number one, clearly 2023 is meant to be 2024. The documentation in your packet and what is coming around reflects the proper date.
Thank you.
Thank you. I still second it.
All right, so any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero.
And you're now returning to item B?
Right, now we're going back to B.
Yeah.
Kathleen? And this is item B for the public, it's a review five-year revolving fund report.
I don't have it, I don't know if Danielle didn't have it together yet. I'm sorry, I'm at staff.
Good evening.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the boards.
And then if you'll just say your name officially, thanks.
Good evening all, Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. In the agenda packet is a sizable listing of every expenditure for revolving funds, each one of them for the last five years. In addition, there were some summaries of revenue and expenses for five years, and a short narrative, kind of a summary of revolving funds as a whole, the majority of what was taken from DLS. I don't, I didn't know if it'd be better to just kind of have questions, just, there wasn't anything that I came across that was remarkable or concerning or material.
Yeah, I think it's probably good to start with questions, I think, you know, I went through all the info, I don't know if any board members have specific questions, rather than just reiterating what's in there.
Sure, sure.
So I'll open it up to questions from the board first.
I'll, I'll start if I may.
Sure, great, thank you.
There, there has been an awful lot of discussion about revolving funds since I've sat on the board, and Kathleen, thank you for this, this is definitely helpful, however, for me, I just would like to understand where the, where the concern regarding the revolving funds come in, and I ask that because, as I'm looking through our departments, and I look through the narrative of what a revolving fund is and what it's supposed to do, I understood all that before I got this. I'm just interested in understanding why we're going through the exercise of discussing revolving funds. I think it's good that we have this information in front of us, so that we can actually see it, but I'd love somebody to, to tell me what I don't understand, help me understand what I don't understand.
Do it, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, well, I've been making most of the noise, so I'll say it. I think arguably, they're, they're fairly stable, year to year to year to year. At that point, I start saying to myself, okay, if you want to have a cushion, that's one thing, but if this is integral to the way you're operating, and it continues to be integral to the way you operate in the same fashion, my preference would be for the public to have it as an appropriated fund, because there's more internal control. The revolving fund does not have the same lock-in that an appropriated account would have. You can't aggregate 35 uniforms into a part-time person on an appropriated account. You can do that here, because it's just a bucket of money that you're spending, and since it seems to be fairly stable, that that bucket pertains X number thousand dollars for people, X number thousand dollars for uniforms, you can, you can lock in that that's all you can spend on it this way, that's all you can spend on it that way. We don't have that kind of internal control on revolving funds, and they have grown dramatically through the years in magnitude.
So through you, Madam Chair, if I may, to Select Board, how, member Howell, so if what I'm hearing you, if what I'm hearing is, if I have it right, is you may be feeling that some of the departments have a revolving fund limit that might be higher than what they need? Is that what I'm hearing?
If it's stable, I think it should be appropriated by, like everybody else gets appropriated for things.
Understood.
And then they have a cushion for, this is for unanticipated things, where you don't know that you're going to have the seventh baseball team, you don't know about the uniforms, about the coach, or whomever, but if there's a stability to the rest of it, there's, it would be hard put to understand why, because we're also supposed to give a yearly report to town meeting, too, about the actual expenditures, and this is the first time I've seen this, which is, thank you very much, it was, it was illustrative, it was actually very eye-opening to me, but my point is, that's why I want to see over five years, fairly stable. I mean, and the purpose of the revolving fund should be, okay, what didn't we anticipate, and how can we quickly do something, because you can't wait for town meeting to go back for money again, but it really shouldn't be the way you operate, and it's gotten to that point with Wreckin' Youth particularly, it's like, half of it's operating on the basis of appropriations, and half of it's operating on revolving funds.
All right, so through you again, Madam Chair, I was going to ask you if you could highlight a department for me, that you may feel that the cushion, as you put it, is a little higher. I think Joe wants to speak, I'd love him to speak.
Joe?
Yeah, I would prefer not, and this is not necessarily apropos of what's going on right now, however, in addition to what the Finance Director has provided, because she's clearly given the five-year as she's indicated, and I noticed in there, the narrative comports with division of local services, so that's the state, but I want to make it clear that Chapter 8 of our general bylaws is our revolving fund general bylaw. That's because there's two elements that may occur at town meeting, one of which occurs every year, and that is the cap. So you may recall this year, I believe it was Article 39, where the town meeting was asked to vote the cap, the limit by which the amounts can be expended under that. The other element that we have not done in recent years, and I think that's a positive thing, is amending the purposes or the number of revolving funds. I say I think that's helpful, because in years past, I think there were annual articles that talked about the language, and there was annual article that talked about the cap. Now, you folks create the warrant, so you folks could create an article as prior boards, I think some of you members may recall, have talked about, that can eliminate. If memory serves correctly, I think we're looking at nine revolving funds now?
For total?
There's six of substance, there's, there's two that are much smaller, you have, you know, five of the larger ones.
So if I think then, the total number, what I was getting to is, the number used to be higher. We talked about the revolving fund relative to the Albro House, the manner in which that was working had long since passed, so you, the owners of the general bylaws, you, the owners of the departments through me, have made the determination, but specifically, you have the financial data that's being presented tonight by the Finance Director, you have the law that requires, or that allows forwarding, sets the standards, but I also want you to be aware, we have a general bylaw, and the general bylaw sets the cap every year. Thank you.
What's that total right now, for all of them?
I don't have that total, for the, for the limit approval?
The limit approval for all the funds for this particular year, say?
I'd have to look it up at town meeting, but what I, I just did want to kind of trace back to one of your previous comments, insofar as internal controls, some of the revolving funds do have more specific expense accounts, specifically recreation, they have a great deal of them, they have projects, so they have spring, summer, fall, winter programs, of which their expenditures are specifically categorized, so they have a better sense for their programs, so there is not like unlimited type of expenditures, and while they are fairly stable, they're actually, in the last two years, they, all the revolving funds, like, the majority, like, if you aggregate all the amounts of money, they are not bringing in as much money as they are spending, so they are using prior year's reserves, so which is kind of the purpose of the revolving fund. So it gives them some stability, you know, depending on programs, so I thought that would be kind of important. So I thought that would be kind of important to know, like it's not that they are sandbagging a ton of money each year, so that's actually not what's happening. And the fact that they are fairly stable means that, you know, the programs, the fees, and the expenses associated with those, with those programs that, you know, each department's running is pretty well maintained, it's, you know, that's as expected there. But there is the opportunity, should something come up. But it's a very restrictive type of thing, it can only use the funds you collect for a specific purpose.
Right.
You know, and that's why recreation has a general fund budget along with a revolving fund budget. It's, there are, you know, instances, you know, there's, you don't, office supplies, or, you know, dues and subscriptions and travel expenses, those are not programs that you would expect to pay for if you're doing summer camp or something like that. So that was, I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
And then there was a couple little blips, which must have been, because when you look at it, I think it said FY '21, but it's, excuse me, really was COVID year.
Yeah, there was a huge decrease in, specifically like RAC, you know, as you would expect.
Right.
But even COA, excuse me, the Community Center, anything that was like, you know, for public participation programs, there's a tremendous decrease in revenue, but also a corresponding decrease in expenses.
And spent, right, exactly.
Yeah, so you'll, you will see that big dip.
Excuse me, thank you.
Insofar as I can determine the, the total that's approved as a whole. Now, it is a, it is a ceiling, it's not that it's spent up to that. Just, you know, we don't, it's not, that's just the most they could spend should they need to, but it's not necessarily what has been spent.
Right.
And those limits are reviewed each year, and there have been changes in prior years where they were increased because there was, you know, the expenses were close to exceeding them, so for next year, we just, you know, added a little bit more based on the discussion with the department head and kind of the expense trend.
And then I think that although they may not be delved into in extreme research, but the revolving funds are part of our audit annually.
Yes, yes, yes.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my point is, through the years, this has not gone down. The aggregate number continues to go a little bit higher each year, I'm not interested in crippling anybody, but I think it's fair to say that the controls over appropriated budgets are a little bit more stringent than what's going on with the revolving funds in general.
I would disagree. Because those limits are what's deemed reasonable.
I'm talking about the controls within them.
But no, the controls, we follow the same exact process for every expense, regardless of what the funding source is. There are, you know, the invoices are processed by the administrator in the department or the department head, however it's done, it's reviewed and signed off by the department head. That expense then comes over to accounting where it's reviewed through the accounting office, it's through at least two people in the accounting office, it doesn't matter what the expense is, we do not segregate by account number or process, everything is looked at the same exact format. So there is a great deal of control, and I know that the people, you know, who I deal with insofar as reviewing these, if there's ever been any questions or concerns, everything is, you know, is really well researched, and if there's anything in question, we certainly go back. I think knowing that this is directly money that those departments are entrusted with for fees for service, I think that those departments take that pretty seriously. That's, that's my impression dealing with them, I think that they want to make sure that, you know, they're accountable to the people who are paying for these services.
Kathleen, that's why I asked the other question, I think the public has a right to understand where the dynamic is going. The aggregate amount there, that is sealing, that a sealing for all of these funds is a pretty significant number now.
Okay.
And I'd like to know what the number is.
Kathleen?
I have that up, I can add it in one second. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The number has not changed in at least two years. The number changes because it's a warrant article that goes through your review process. So my, my pushback, if I would call it that, is simply that revolving funds are yet another special revenue source that municipalities are allowed to utilize, Town of Harwich is no different. Town of Harwich has a well-codified general bylaw that speaks to the purposes and the follow-up cap to the same. If the board is looking to make a change, this is the right venue, but I think the commentary is incorrect to staff. I think the commentary must be amongst and between the board. Because again, it's your bylaw, you direct the language in that chapter specifically, and the caps are what you determine they be, and administration and finance have not raised any caps. Now, having said all that, I do want to put out there that I planned under Town Administrator Report to talk about four major financial topics next week, and I know board members are keenly aware of them, Judah Eldredge, et cetera, so I'll get into that later, but three of those topics relate back to the revolving fund that we have for tax title. Now, I would argue, and I think Kathleen, as we go through it, would back up on this, right now the cap is $36,000. I would argue that that cap's going to be insufficient over the next two to three years. And because when you see what the source is, that source is going to increase exponentially, purposefully. If you don't change the cap, you can only spend $36,000 out of what may be tens of thousands, if not $100,000. But to be clear, if there's consternation about the levels and the cap and all that, then if I may boldly state, that's among and between the five of you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, I believe the number is 1.3 million.
Oh, thank you.
1.292.
Okay. What was that number?
1.292 is what I come up with from the chart.
All revolving.
Oh, the total, thank you.
Pete, and then I'll hand the gavel back to Julie, I believe you are ready.
Thank you. Jeff, to answer your question, I think you can ask 10 different people and get seven different answers as to why they want this information, as to the relevance of the, you know, the request for these reports as far as the revolving funds. I think they serve a tremendous purpose. Five years of history may be a bit much, but nonetheless, they serve a tremendous purpose. One, they let us, just to what the Town Administrator had to say, have a better understanding if the caps are where they should be, whether they should be increased or decreased. And without this information being sent to us periodically, we wouldn't have any real knowledge as to whether or not they should be adjusted. I know I said before all of you, and again to Joe's point, I am not suggesting that there's been any mismanagement of these funds or that staff has done anything improper with these funds, it clearly is a policy of this board to have these funds in place. I would go down the road of questioning what the cap level should be, and whether or not some of the expenses coming out of these accounts belong in our operating budget as opposed to the revolving funds. I'll be candid, I've gone through a few of these, I don't know if it's three or four in some detail, and I'm sure those of you that went through them as well, some have greater detail than others, and it's just by virtue of the way they're accounted for. But the one that stood out to me, the greatest, was the Community Center, right? COVID definitely had an impact on the Community Center, and it really doesn't want to get rebounded. You know, it's had some rebound, but when you look at 2020, you had the revenue of about $76,000, and now we're tracking a little below 30 in revenue. That's alarming, because expenditures really haven't decreased, and so they're running at a net deficit of their, of their revolving fund. So again, things that we may need to look at as a group are ask Finance and the Town Administrator to delve into and get back to us in some greater details, because if you, if you continue on that road, that path, next thing you know, the revolving fund is in a deficit, and that's certainly not what we want. And again, I look at the property on Sisson Road, and I do think there's probably quite a bit, I won't say quite a bit, I think there's areas that could come out of the revolving fund and go into our operating budget. So items like that, I think are why, why these reports are important. And more than anything, it's the taxpayers' money, and they get an opportunity to, and this is my two cents, they get an opportunity to see what's actually going on. And I would take the request one step further, and I don't want it in a granular fashion, I want it more global, but I'd love to understand more about the revenue portion. What, what types of revenue are going into these accounts? You know, I've got an idea, especially when you talk about the Community Center, I know there's the weight room, the fitness center, whatever you call it. But what else, what else is going into those accounts? And again, I don't need, who gave $25 for a gym membership? I just want to have a general idea of what types of monies are going into these accounts. And again, I specifically look at the, the Community Center because that concerns me when we're running a $30,000 or $40,000 deficit now, year over year, on expenditure there. That's alarming, because I want to see that, you know, center stay where it is and function to the level in which it's done, so that's my two cents, thank you.
No, and if I just may interject, I don't need to interrupt, but that's a great idea. And to be honest with you, we're not that involved in knowing, you know, all the funding sources and how they work it. I think it probably would be really helpful if you had some of the department heads come in. I mean, I certainly don't want to speak for them because I don't know enough about it, but it would be helpful, because maybe there are expenses that, you know, we can look at that maybe should go in the operating budget. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. I mean, there's nothing to it, this just gives flexibility and, you know, just from my own knowledge, I actually reached out to the DLS attorney, they have one you can just call, you just Zoom with on Wednesdays, it's a great feature. And he was like, you know, it's just meant to be, have some flexibility so that if you have like a big event, you know, that you plan for, for 100 people, and it rains, you only have 10, you know, but you've made the expenditures, you know, and things like that. It's just these types of programs are a lot more flexible, whereas, you know, the day-to-day operation of like, you know, a department like mine, we don't, there's not a whole lot of real, you know, you know, eventful things that come through, so.
This exists for a reason, there's no question about it, it's just how they're managed.
Yeah, and there, you know, there was, I know there have been concerns that, you know, things should be put in the operating budget, and, you know, and the corresponding revenue goes to it. I mean, there's no, there's certainly, you know, I don't even have an opinion on it because I'll do it whatever way the board wants to. I just, we always, you know, insofar as my office at least, we're very, very careful, and everything gets looked at, the last thing we look at is, you know, where it's going. We just want to make sure it's going in the right bucket, we don't necessarily ask why it's going in that bucket. I mean, we do, but, you know, so if it was to go into the general fund, that's fine, you know. The only problem is, if you had closed out the revolving funds completely, those, the balances would then close out their surplus revenue and then would be part of the free cash calculation, and then you would not have any flexibility, you know. So if you did close them and then say, well, you know, we should do this, you know, a year or two later, you wouldn't have any balances to fall back on. And if you have deficit in a revolving fund, the general fund has to fund it, so that's just.
And I think that's where it comes into where other departments have wanted their revolving funds so that they can plan accordingly, at least that's the feedback I've heard since I've been on the board. Joe?
Just going back to the comment about revenue and sources and all that, and bear with me, I'm going from memory, but I do pretty much have Chapter Eight memorized. So if you look at the table in Chapter Eight, there are, I believe, four columns. The first one says, what is the name of the revolving fund? So you'll see 204 Sisson Road, Community Center, Alborough House, which like I said was the previous one, tax title, et cetera. So there's a description of it. We modified, when I say we, I mean the town, through town meeting voters, and backing it out through the Select Board and Mayor's Town Administrator, the who is it assigned to? So it used to be directly to the department head, and based on the discussion that previous boards have had, the decision was made that the language now says the Town Administrator or designee. And so that was to demonstrate that the Administrator is aware of it, and I have designated each of those standard department heads to be the person, but point being, there's an oversight. The third column, these are the revenue that are derived and that can be, that populate the revolving fund. Whatever that language is in that column was vetted on the outset of the bylaw being created by the Attorney General. They would have relied upon the Division of Local Service and Department of Revenue, but it was evaluated. And then the fourth column says, and those funds with revenue sources, what can they only be used to offset? So we should know, whether it's accounting or not, we should know because the departments are doing their funds turned over, their, what we call turnover sheets, to the Treasurer's Department saying, these funds were derived from these programs, therefore we know that should be credited to the revolving fund, just like when they're doing a warrant for expenditure, that same thing. So we do have that somewhere. It is a great discussion, especially if you're then going to build on this policy discussion for a further policy discussion. But I want to make it clear, we have the information. Whether we have it readily available or not is one thing, but our frontline folks are tracking that for that purpose. Because that's how we know when it goes through audit, we survive audit.
Right.
But I would just ask everyone to go back to Chapter Eight, because even though it's a table, it's a very powerful bylaw, and it makes reference to everything we've talked about, including the statutory reference under the Department of Revenue.
Thank you, Joe. Jeff?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And through you, Pete, I agree 100%, the taxpayers' money, and they should know where it's going, for sure. The reason I brought up initially the question about what, what is it with, with the revolving fund that our board members have questions with? Because I'd been listening for almost a year, but never getting to that, that finish line of understanding what it was Don was asking for, what I think even you asked for it once before. So I just wanted to know specifically what our board was looking for. I do have a couple of questions. The golf court, I hate to even bring up the golf, the Golf Course Pro Shop, the Golf Course Pro Shop uses revolving funds to purchase merchandise.
They do.
So that would indicate to me that the pro shop is owned by the town and not the head pro. In many golf courses, the head pro owns the pro shop, and that's part of their compensation package. And I'm asking, yes, through you, Madam Chair?
You are correct.
Okay, great.
And the Town of Harwich, the head pro is not the owner of the inventory.
Okay. When the money, when the money that is from the revolving fund is being used to purchase merchandise, and that merchandise is sold for profit, where does the profit land?
So that, if I may, and if I may for my colleague. So those are funds derived from the sale of merchandise, all of those funds are added to the revolving fund.
So they replenish the revolving fund, so to speak?
Correct.
And they're not part of golf course profit? Or, I'm sorry, golf course surplus, golf course revenue? Help me, Joe, golf course, I mean, staring at me, just throwing me a lifeline, for God's sake.
Well, if I may, that's why I'm looking in the direction of Finance Director. So we, if I may, Kathleen, we do not say profit.
Right, right, my fault.
And we wouldn't necessarily say surplus.
Yeah.
But there is a direct connection between that particular revolving fund is used to purchase merchandise that is sold. The sale of merchandise is what has become a revenue source. So this is the revenue source, this is what it buys, and it's meant to be a continuum in that particular instance. So we don't talk, if I may, sorry.
Please, no, no, go ahead.
We don't talk in terms of surplus profit and things like that. In every instance, I believe this is still accurate, the landmark case study, when it comes to fees and all of that generated, is Emerson College v. City of Boston. So we're always mindful of the pricing of that merchandise has to be such that it could pass the Emerson test, so-called. So the department heads, and certainly our veteran department heads, have been well aware of those standards. So the expectation is that whatever they're pricing it at is not a deal, a sale, or anything other than, this is roughly what it takes to purchase it, here we go.
Thank you, may I continue if I could? As I look through this, I noticed that at the 204 building, gas and utilities are part of the revolving fund. And to Pete's point about potentially moving that toward a budget, I don't see it in the Community Center's revolving fund, that they're not paying gas and utilities. Can I get an explanation as to why the 204 building, through you, Madam Chair, Joe? Madam Chair, and Joe?
Yeah, so in the short term, because that's how the revolving fund and predecessor funds were used.
Understood.
When you look at the Article 4 department list, you'll see that there were other buildings that have, that are listed as municipal buildings, and they have funding sources to pay their utilities. I would recommend that we add 204 Sisson to that, and as you're discussing, take it out of the revolving fund and put it into that purpose. But as we do that, just be mindful that you're further cementing the 204 Sisson Municipal Building, as I will always call it, remaining online, because you're now impacting upon the operating budget and not the revolving funds. But the short answer is, since that building came back online, and to present day, the revolving fund and other sources were used for the utilities. Furthermore, I would like to add on that to say that I would recommend going forward, especially as it relates to the Capitol LA plan that I need to build every year, we may want to have a specified municipal building, not to be confused with the building department, not to be confused with DPW, not to be confused with facilities maintenance within that, but a buildings fund whereby everybody knows there shouldn't be any salaries, but the expense line can tie back to the utilities that the town pays for these buildings. We may also then know going forward in those expense line that there could also be normal repairs and things of that nature. Other buildings that are fully within our operating budget are handled that way, but to be clear, if we now progress to that level, that's a sea change. Neither good nor bad from my perspective. I try to be like the finance director. We don't have opinions. We give you facts and you make decisions. But the more that you take out of those revolving funds and put into the operating budget, the more we're on the hook for it. So those utilities could absolutely go that way. We just haven't had that level of discussion, but I for one think it's great that we're having this on May 28th, because there's 343 days till town meeting.
And to be clear, the cultural center director does not have to pay the utility bills, which was mentioned by members of the finance committee. I just want to make that.
Correct. Administration relies upon those funds derived for those purposes.
Right.
So in closing, I want to say thank you, Dawn, for bringing this up, because for me, this was incredibly helpful to understand the big picture, and Kathleen for doing the work, you know, putting this together for us. And it's helped me tremendously understand the revolving fund concept. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? John, Dawn?
John?
I don't think of your name for this.
Thanks, Jeff, for that. I'm not suggesting to eliminate them all, and I never have been suggesting to just blow them up. There needs to be some, but this is the first time I've seen this too. What came in, what went out, in over a five-year period. It's real helpful to see that. And again, Kathleen, I've said this before, I'd love to see the same thing for the special purpose funds, because originally I had thought that the golf course was dumping in memberships into their revolving fund, and that's not at all what's happening. There's a special purpose fund. Arguably, at this table, one of the prime things that we're responsible for is the finances of the town. Before we get into any kind of minutia about anything else, it's not micromanaging to ask, okay, where's the money coming from and where's it going to, because that's why the public hires us. I'm trying to get a handle on that, and I also waited until afterwards. I think we need another agenda item, because that cell tower money, I don't care what you got as a legal opinion, there's at least seven other selectmen who aren't even sitting here, who through the years because that fund rolled over. And I know, Michael, you know that we were, we were voting each year to dump monies from that into the trust. That had happened often. Before the trust, people came in front of the town, and it was a bucket of money, and they pitched a project, whether it was from Habitat, or Hack, or the CDP, or whatever. And the select board could then decide whether they did or didn't want to disperse any cash from that fund, in that, in the scenario that you suggested, it's completely unworkable. It goes back into free cash, and it's discreet within a year. And yet I know that those other special purpose funds don't go back to the general treasury. So something's got to be done to fix that.
Joe?
So I think on behalf of the finance director, I would agree, and the finance director would agree. But to be clear, the finance director didn't render the legal opinion. The finance director was assisting me in trying to get to the bottom of that equation. So everything that you've mentioned, I think, is appropriate, but it's appropriate for you to talk with your council about, because when we were trying to do all of our tying back on all of the funds, that's when council informed us, based on the public records that the finance director found, that everything that we had assumed may not be the case. But that is not the effect of the finance director rendering an opinion, nor me.
Right.
So I do think it is worthy of an agenda topic with your council.
And we can certainly do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's exactly where I'm going to, because they came out with an opinion that's contrary to 20 years of practice, and I got to be able to have in front of me the person who decided that that was overturned, because it was not practice, and I know you know this too. We had assumed that that fund was dynamic, it was rolled over from year to year, and it was, and again, I don't even know what the other special purpose funds are. But again, we're elected to actually determine that kind of stuff. That's why we brought up the, I brought this up in the first place, is if we don't have a full handle on the finances, I'm not sure that we even should be sitting here. The public assumes that we do know where the money's coming from, where the money's going to, and how it gets spent. So, I mean, if not us, who?
Well, you know, sometimes we all establish bad habits, and they become the norm. And so ultimately, if that's what happened for 20 years, but legal comes back and says, this is what it was supposed to do, and I'm not.
Legal was part of the original decision?
I'm not debating it. I'm just saying to you that when we can't find documentation to support the past practice, then we need to go on what that legal opinion is. And we can certainly have an agenda topic on that. I'm just pointing out that sometimes you just start doing processes the way you think they're done, because you look to the past.
And the reason that that's important is, based on what the lease payments are, and where we're at right now, we'd have to tap into the free cash, about 160-something thousand, I think, to replenish that as if it had been rolling over. And that's money that's lost to the trust, it's lost to whomever we might want. We don't even have to give it to the trust. The way this fund was set up by town meeting was that the select board was entitled to disperse from that fund, and it was supposed to continue to be a fund. So I know that you got an opinion, and I hear the town administrator, but we need to have the town council in front of us, because it was the same company. We had the same lawyers who helped set this thing up, that are now saying, no, we didn't mean that. I mean, so it's unworkable. I mean, the lease payment money is going somewhere that it wasn't intended to go.
Joe?
I just wanted to note that I've recorded that cell tower revenue is a discussion for future agenda.
Yes, thank you.
The finance director and I will rely upon the board to say when.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
So if there's no other questions from board members, I think we can move on to the next item, and thank you, Kathleen, for all the work. And I guess the only other question I would have is to circulate the revolving fund reports, I don't know, quarterly?
So we have a standing practice, if I could say it that way, that precedes both Kathleen and I, whereby departments have to update their revolving fund information quarterly. However, the last finance director of any long tenure had suggested that they're already doing that, so what we can do on a regular basis, and I want to disappoint everybody in advance, we're dropping data out of Munis into some other format, but we can rely, we can make sure that the departments, and they are already doing it, are doing regular turnovers to the treasurer, so that typically what we used to have them do is have them run their own reports. That's time-consuming for them, it's easier for us, and the standard has always been two weeks after quarter end. We're also finding that that's not sufficient, that it really takes about two to four weeks after quarter end to get the numbers. But point being, going forward, we, finance and administration, can produce regular reports that I think may satisfy you on going forward.
Right. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Of course.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
And if there's ever, you know, questions again about, you know, there's other things, certainly can get more of that detailed for you.
Great. Thank you. Can I get a motion on F?
A move that we approve the personnel bylaw classification and compensation table for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five zero. And old business.
Madam Chair?
Relative to that, I took out the two paragraphs that we all agreed were extraneous. I did not take out the language for, that was analogous to the golf, and I would not want to get into another negative discussion tonight. If Jeff is going to be crafting something that's somewhat different, I would happily make this consistent with that for whatever, next week or the week after, and not get into this argument.
So just to be clear, this is old business A, you're talking Hark. Is that what you're talking, yeah?
I mean, and that was the, that was the sticking point, but if, this first time, I mean, that was kind of my point originally. Reciprocally, if that changes, I'm fine with this changing. So instead of arguing it, why don't we see where we're going when you take another shot at it?
Sure. So you'll have the Hark ready for next week as well?
All I got to do is delete that other language, because it's already, it's already set with the other things that you didn't want in it.
Okay, so this is going to come back next week. Okay. All right, so we will go on then to town administrator's report.
Thank you. As I alluded to, sorry.
Yep. Michael?
If I may, oftentimes we're assigned tasks and writing charges, and I know, Jeff, you've done a few. You get no input, and then you submit it, and then we debate it, and then it comes back, and then you submit it again, and you debate it, comes back. So board members are free, and it's not chain deliberation to send your thoughts on the charge to Dawn, to Jeff, and to whomever's working on a charge. It would be nice to have input. I think Pete's points were valid tonight to move the golf forward, but if they're articulated as to your thoughts based on your constituents' thoughts, it would probably be very helpful for you, I would imagine, and for Dawn as well.
Thank you.
That's kind of what I'm saying. Well, you'll all have my, sorry, Madam Chair, you'll all have mine within two days, the update of the golf, and then you can give me feedback, and then I can modify and bring it to the table for next Monday.
Right.
Easy.
Thank you. Back to Joe, for town administrator's report.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, at your meeting next week, if the chair and, well, if the chair agrees, but certainly if you all agree, we'll be having myself, the finance director, your financial consultant, Eric Kinsheriff, interim treasurer collector, Ed Spelman, and assessing director, Carly Jones, presenting on, I'm going to use the language we've used here. I'm learning from the finance people how to translate that into their language as well, but the Judah Eldredge taking, which is also a tax situation, owners unknown and owners known as it relates to tax liens, and treasurer deeds as it relates to land of low value. So we'll have the updates on all of those topics with information coming out later this week and ahead of the packet, and I hope that sort of spurs the discussion going forward. I do want to emphasize that Eric Kinsheriff and Ed Spelman have made tremendous progress on all of those items. So the reason that you brought them in, it's clear to me that they're making great strides on that. And so, we've been working with council. We'll have all of that coming up at your meeting next week, if you allow.
Right. That's good.
Just one ask before that meeting, if the board could get on large paper what the current tax situation, tax lien situation is, with the addresses, the amounts?
We do have that.
Way ahead of time would be great, not.
Yeah, I can actually have Ed send it tomorrow. However, it's in such a format that you can read it on eight and a half by 14. Even I could read it. May I rely upon your looking for something readable, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And to that, there's four pages, Excel spreadsheets, 254 parcels, and the latest number is 7.7 million.
Thank you.
Yep.
Including Judah Eldredge.
Say again?
Including Judah Eldredge.
Correct, that's the top one. What it does not include yet is any delinquencies that may have occurred in '23 and '24, but Ed will be speaking to that Monday night as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you.
Select board members report. Pete?
Two things, if I could. Ironically, and it's not directed just at Michael, but I know Michael's brought it up a few times, we have a free cash policy. It needs to be modified, and the reason I know that is because my signature's still on it. So, it's dated, to say the least.
It's fairly current.
I actually saw a couple policies that had my signature on it, so that alarmed me. But, so anyway, I think we probably want to take a look at that, because we do have a version that we could redline. And the only other thing I wanted to say is kudos to the Department of Public Works for our cemeteries. I have the privilege of driving through a few towns on my way to work, and I will say that not every community takes care of their cemeteries prior to Memorial Day the way Harwich does, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Pete. Dawn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, to piggyback on that comment, I presented the proclamation for us on Memorial Day, which is always an honor, but, and it's something I don't see a lot of other towns do either, so that was thrilling. Just briefly, there was a woman who spoke as the featured speaker for the, as a Gold Star Mother, and she had an incredible story, which I'm going to encapsulate, because it's worth repeating again. Her son, when he was extremely young, was sitting with her father, his grandfather, and the father had never talked about his war experiences, ever, to anybody, and he took an hour to talk to the kid about that. And ironically enough, where Providence happened, within a month, the father died, the grandfather. The kid became a military service officer and went off to, I think it was Afghanistan. He got shot, he was, and he died. And when they came to deliver the dog tags, it was both his dog tag and his grandfather's dog tag that he took into battle with him, that it was so impactful that he heard a story when he was like a five or six-year-old, that it stayed with him for the rest of his life. And she, there wasn't a dry eye in the house. It was just like an incredible story, and I wanted to at least repeat the most important part of it.
Thank you, Dawn. That is amazing. Jeff?
Nothing.
Michael?
Nothing.
And I just want to remind members to send me your goals and objectives, your priorities, and also we have reorganization next week, because we have to have it two weeks out from the election, and update on projects we're going to have next week. Megan wanted to be present for that. And as Joe mentioned, Judah Eldredge, we're going to have that on Monday as well.
Right.
Yep. So, and Michael also add, I'll add the round code Seth Whitefield.
Thank you.
I think that was it.
Seth Whitefield.
Seth Whitefield, right, yeah.
Yeah, Joe asked what it was.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Motion, Jim?
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.